Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call this meeting to order. The meeting of the school committee, June 13, 2024. And I will ask you all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is introduction of members.
Tenorio Millville.
Carrie Goddett Blackstone.
Joseph Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations. I'd like to go out of line.
That's okay, Joe.
Maya Gonye, Student Council President.
Matt Catalano Millville.
Tara Scobie Blackstone.
Tara Larkin Millville.
Dan Keith Blackstone.
Jill Pill Gallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And Erin Vinaca will be here in a few minutes. And next on the agenda, we are going to have the student rep report. Maya?
So I have updates from the high school. So on Monday, Senor Rydel's Spanish III classes went down to the elementary school and taught some Spanish lessons to first graders and kindergarteners. Some topics that were covered were colors, numbers, days of the week, months and days of the year. I was actually lucky enough to be a part of that, and they were actually really excited to learn about Spanish. Like, I was kind of surprised, and they were actually taking it in and trying to pronounce things. And next up, we had our middle school sports day. This was organized by Izzy Goddett, and a lot of athletes and captains went down to the middle school and talked about what sports were going to be available to them and the experience of being on a high school sports team. And they also got to do a bunch of activities and try out a lot of these different sports, some that they may not have heard of. The marching band began practicing on Tuesday, June 11. They had their first practice. And then our BMR track team went states, and Jackson Dutton got ninth in javelin and was ranked second in the pentathlon. Usman Tureh got fourth in javelin. And then our BMR Junior Book Awards will be held tomorrow morning in the auditorium. And we have lots of upcoming end-of-the-year events at BMR. We have our school-wide bingo, which will be tomorrow afternoon. We have our annual karaoke bash, which I know Ms. Falis is very excited about. And we have our first-ever BMR decathlon that will be held on Monday, and we will be prepping for that tomorrow with our advisories.
Any questions to follow up? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a lovely evening, you guys.
Happy summer.
Happy summer.
Next, the consent of agenda A, warrants and meeting minutes for May 9, 2024. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants.
Motion made.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll also take a motion to approve the minutes for May 9, 2024. Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next up is public forum. Anyone here to address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on. School committee agenda, student recognition. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we are very excited. Do you want to come forward, Natalia, with your family? I know, you're so embarrassed. It's okay. Don't be embarrassed. Are your parents are going to leave you hanging? They're not going to come with you?
It's all good for us as well, so.
We are very happy that you're here. So Natalia, we heard, I know we heard an update from our high school student rep about the high school athletes at the state track meet, but we also heard some really great news about the middle school athletes. And if we heard this correctly, who's your coach? Yeah, please come forward. Like, I thought you were back there, but I didn't see you. And we'll let your coach speak about this specific. But we heard some really exciting news about your performance at the track meet as it relates to javelin. Coach, you want to share a little bit about?
Sure. I mean, for starters, I know Natalia's like, oh, what is he going to say? I mean, talk about extremely hot day on June 1. I mean, average temp was in the high 70s and the 80s. And the whole time Natalia's like, I just want to throw. Why are the guys going first? I just want to throw. Can I please throw the javelin? Can you go talk to the officials? I'm like, well, I can't talk to the officials. You will definitely throw. But I mean, it was extremely competitive. I mean, there are roughly 80 different schools in the division that competed. And out of those 80 schools, there was around 40 to 50 girls that competed in the turbo jab. And to kick things off, I mean, we're looking at our Division III state champion in the javelin throwing a 95, which is incredible. Granted, I know Natalia's like, but I didn't get triple digits because at DBC she threw in the triple digits. Just like, I'm like, 95 is good. Yeah, but I still had around the 200, Coach. And so that type of energy, I mean, she just crushed it.
Amazing.
And then on top of that, she came in third overall in the 200-meter dash. On top of that, because at that point, she's like, I just want to run. I just, you know, I just need to take it. I just want to take care of business. Why is this running fast? Can you get them out there? Can you, you know? I'm like, Natalia, I'm doing the best I can. She says, well, yeah, you have sway. I'm like, no, I don't have a lot of sway. But I mean, overall, I mean, this entire season, watching Natalia go from coming out, being very strong on the track, but especially in the jab, she was also one of our leaders on our team as well. I mean, everything from leading stretches to helping our sixth graders, to helping our seventh graders, and also keeping that, like, level head. So I mean, again, we talk about role models, you know, as a BMR athlete. I mean, this is one of our best BMR athletes that's heading up into the high school level. So can't sing my accolades enough. I mean, Natalia, this was your season, so.
Congratulations, Natalia. That really is.
What we have for you is a certificate of recognition, and I'll read it. It's the following. Award is given to Natalia Marias. Congratulations on earning first place in the javelin at the 12th Massachusetts Middle School Track and Field Championships. And on behalf of your peers, your teachers, your administration, and the school committee, we are very proud to have that achievement and your achievements in our district. So thank you very much.
We're going to make you pose for a picture with your parents and.
Use our fancy backdrop.
Yeah, use the backdrop.
Want to get in a group picture? That's okay. Like, Coach, get in there. Squeezing this. One, two, three. One more. Awesome. Perfect. Congratulations.
Great job, Natalia. Congratulations.
Can't wait to see your BMR.
Now, the meeting doesn't get any better than now, so we can adjourn now, right? Next, Mr. Superintendent, oh, one more thing. I guess just, I should retire teachers out of this. Yeah, so retiree recognition. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, so we have two retirees this year. We have one from Unit C, Denise Andre, and we have one from Unit A, Maureen Rose. I'm sure most of you are at least familiar with the name. Maureen has taught pre-algebra in grade seven at the middle school for 28 years, which is quite remarkable as far as dedication and longevity. And we are very happy for Maureen, but we are sad to see her go. She wasn't able to be here this evening, but she did choose a book. And if any of your children have had Mrs. Rose, you will not be surprised that she picked a book about pie. Pie Day was sort of her thing, and it was something she definitely loved. It was something she celebrated. I may have gotten a fuzzy kitty, electronic kitty card, Happy Pie Day every year since I've been here from Mrs. Rose's students. They did a lot of activities on that day, including eating pie. And she was something I know that she was very proud of. It was something that the kids really enjoyed and something that she really enjoyed. So she picked a book all about pie that will be in the middle school library for many, many years to come. So kids who are interested in learning more about 3.14 will be able to do that. So we wish both of our retirees much happiness and much health in their next stage of the journey. Thank you for.
Thank you. And thank you to the service and dedication that those retirees have put in over the years. Moving on to the school year 2025 calendar revision.
Yes, so we, as many ayes that there were on this calendar, somehow, I don't know if it was wishful thinking, I'm not sure how we did it, but we collectively, the collective we, myself included, missed a day. So the calendar that was in front of you prior was 179 days. As many times as we counted, counted, and recounted and had a bunch of people doing it, we somehow collectively missed a day. I think it was because we wanted the school year to end on a Friday. And the 180th day next year will actually be on a Monday. However, you might recall that a year ago, we had a similar situation. We had one, actually, we ended on a Friday, but we had one snow day. And by the time Good Friday rolled around, we had sent out a message to the community and talked to the staff, and everybody just collectively agreed, let's, you know, come in and work and go to school on Good Friday and not have to, you know, deal with coming back on a Monday. So if we get to that point, you'll notice in the calendar this year, Good Friday's on April 18. It's the Friday before vacation. If we get to a point where we don't have any snow days, Erin's calling it, we're going to have snow days.
No, I'm calling it that you're not going to get that day. It's attached to your vacation.
That it could be an option. Otherwise, we will be back on a Monday for next school year, for our last day. So I'm just sharing that as an option, something we can attempt to do should we need to do that. If we end up with a snow day, it doesn't matter anyway. So we'll be similar calendar to this year.
All right. Any other questions on that? So I'll take a motion to approve the revised 24-25 calendar school year.
Sumo.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. MSBA update.
Is that okay, Tara? To give a quick update? So just a couple of quick pieces on our project with the Mass School Building Authority. A few things. We, the school building committee, specifically the subcommittee that's working on the owner's project manager request for services, have submitted everything to MSBA for them to review and approve. And we are hoping to hear from them tomorrow. They said they would need two weeks. Tomorrow will be the end of that two-week window, so I'm going to be communicating with them tomorrow morning, whether we hear from them or not, to see where we stand so we can keep this process moving. Because we need to get the request for services in the central register so we can actually start the process of collecting the package from our potential OPMs and start the process of interviews. So that is moving along. They have everything they need. We're just waiting to hear back from the Mass School Building Authority. And again, we are trying to get this done and in place and have a candidate, or a firm, I should say, in front of the Mass School Building Authority for their September 9 panel review for owner's project managers for construction projects. So we are still pushing that deadline, and we'll know more in the next couple of days. But they have everything they need. Hopefully, it kind of sails through and we can get it in the central register. The other thing, just a big thank you to Jesse, to Tim, and to our school building committee and our school committee members that have reviewed the very short video, the latest video that we're going to be sending out to our school community and to our two towns, really highlighting kind of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and looking at that MSBA process just to help it make sense to people because it's kind of a complicated and lengthy process. So to our families and friends tuning in and listening, be on the lookout for that, I hope, tomorrow, very beginning of next week at the latest. So we're moving right along.
Very good. Any questions on? Okay, I think this one's going to go to Carrie. This is going, selling of pre-worn athletic jerseys.
Throughout this past school year, we've heard several times, for those of us who've been working with athletics, that there are closets and closets full of old BMR uniforms. So we've been kind of teasing with the idea of grabbing a couple of athletes, national honor students, whatever, going in the summer, cleaning out all of the closets and trying to pick out some of the higher-quality ones that have been stored in there. And then perhaps at homecoming, setting up a booth and trying to sell some of the old jerseys to alumni, students. We all know, like, retro vintage is all huge right now. And then do it as a fundraiser and put it back into the athletics budget. So I think we just need approval of the committee to be able to sell those jerseys.
How far do those jerseys go back? How deep is that closet?
I don't know if they've ever been cleaned out.
Really?
Yeah. Keith Duchamp thinks that they are, like, originals.
There'd be some very valuable jerseys in there.
So some people, alumni that are listening, they can come back and get their basketball jerseys from decades ago.
84 varsity, right?
Any questions on this? Any, Erin?
Just to piggyback off of that, though, putting the money back into athletics budget, but we've already funded athletics. Would it be something we could put towards our field funding that we've started with the banners? And the, I don't know. Is that something that would go more towards the district versus like a one-time revenue to athletics?
My thought on that is.
Well, so we, gosh, I'm not, I didn't know this was coming. So when we talked about, it was policy about fundraising, and we were selling the banners up on the track or in the gym. We create, did we create a fund for that yet? We said it was earmarked for that through the policy?
When we went over that, that was, the sticking point in that was pretty much that the funds that are raised had to go to the district, and the district would then disperse that through, you know, as needed. So if I recall that correctly.
I think so. I believe so. But we did, but I know we talked about.
Like, fund our fields.
Using, possibly using that for fields.
Correct.
Yeah, if that's what the committee wanted to do with that.
Correct. It would have to go, the funds would have to go back to the district, and the committee would figure out where they would allocate them. So it wouldn't directly go straight to athletics just because it's, I believe it's just money that is collected by the district has to be voted on by the school committee.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds right.
I just, I know those closets need to be cleaned out and organized, and I thought if we could get any fundraising out of it, it might be a worthwhile project.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a great idea. But do we have to earmark it right now, or is it?
We could do what we did with the banners, if the committee was interested in that, and we could keep track of what we've sold and how much we've raised. And then the committee could decide.
The funds would be.
They want to put towards fields or if there's something else.
Because when this project, the backing up to MSBA, like, when this project does come to, I think, in good faith, having money to put towards things that might not be reimbursable or reimbursable at the full percent is just, you know, it shows the efforts on our parts. And I thought the banners were the start of that, so I might have just wanted it to be.
Well, I think the conversation was had at that time.
It was.
No, we did.
Yeah, okay.
But would there have to be, like, some sort of, like?
We'd have to establish the account.
Separate account or prize fund. I don't, that's the part I don't understand or know about. So I do remember the policy being pretty clear, though.
The revenues would be, there would be a name where that revenue came from.
Yes. It's easy enough to track. I mean, we couldn't, you know?
The funds would still be at the discretion of the school committee.
Yes.
To expand.
Yep.
So you're looking for permission to.
To clean out that closet with some of the students and then sell some of the jerseys.
And you're looking to do it at homecoming, which is October?
I don't know if we have a date.
Usually, typically.
Yeah. Or even just during, like, fall games, set up a table during a football game or.
I don't know. This could become bigger. Like, I know if we want alumni, like, there could be a Facebook page.
Right.
Something to get it out to outside the walls.
Like an alumni page.
I think they're all going to come back and want their numbers.
How many current students are going to want 1980s basketball shorts? But.
Maybe never know. You never know.
If it's even compliant with.
Like, I know my son wears my husband's BMR baseball hat from the 90s, so. Whatever we find in there could be.
If we can just let the teams wear them.
Yeah. A vintage day.
Grow back games.
So do we need a motion to?
Yeah, a motion to allow the selling of the pre-worn athletic jerseys will, without earmarking the money? Or you said it to go back into athletics? So that's the only reason I.
Yeah. I was just thinking because it was coming from athletics would go back to it, but I don't.
Fields or athletics?
It is, yeah. Athletics is a very broad, general category.
So a motion to approve with the funds being at the discretion of the school committee?
I would just say motion, I'll make a motion to allow the selling of pre-worn athletic jerseys from previous years.
Motion by Erin?
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is review and approve. Before I go to that, can we get an update? Like, and when you have those.
When we have.
Go to that closet.
A few of the bidding wars, right?
I think so.
Revised to an auction. Review and approve policy D. And in that is to waive the first reading of purchasing regional school district purchasing authority and procurement requirements.
Matt, do you want to review it? You want me to review it?
I'll read.
Yeah. So there are three policies in your packets this evening that Matt, Tara, and Tara S., and Erin, and I have worked on as a policy subcommittee. They are super straightforward. The first is policy DJI. And I should take a step back and say that they, just kind of the quick headline on these is that these are fiscal policies that have just been really kind of quarter-turned by the Mass Association of School Committees to fit regional, specifically regional school districts. So you might even, you'll notice in one of them, like, that's literally, like, the only thing. It says regional school districts. So it's a very small change. But file DJI would be replacing file D, I'm sorry, DJ1, my apologies, would be replacing file DJ. And that's underneath regional school district purchasing. And if you look at the draft, you will see the change that the school committee will designate the district's chief purchasing offer is crossed out to Director of Finance and Operations. The chief purchasing officer, again, is crossed out to District Finance and Operations. A Director of Finance and Operations will develop and administer the purchasing program for schools in keeping with legal requirements, et cetera. So that's really just the small adjustment there is that Joe, in his position as Director of Finance and Operations, will be acting as the school committee's chief purchasing officer. And when Joe receives his MCPPO, his procurement credentials, which he's well along the way, the school committee can take action and vote Joe as that person at that time. But I would suggest not to kind of muddy the waters, but that we wait on that until Joe gets his MCPPO certification with that. So that's the only change there, and that would replace, again, file DJ. The second is DJA1. And so you'll see that file DJA and DJA1. Again, you know, the adjustment here is that this is, you'll see a change from purchasing authority to regional school district purchasing authority so that change is, you know, very minor. And the procurement requirement changes are a little bit different. We did make an adjustment to this. So this is file DJE1. That's the new file. And you'll see the red line copy. This all falls in direct alignment with the updated legislation around procurement. But the, you'll notice the blue at the bottom. The school committee wanted, the subcommittee, rather, wanted to make a slight change to this policy. And we added language that states, "To ensure competitive pricing, the district will still solicit estimates for supplies and services at $50,000, over $50,000, excuse me." So you'll notice if you go to the top of the procurement requirements, it's paragraph three. It used to be 50,000, but the state changed it to 100,000. So we'll get estimates for anything that is $50,000 or more.
Still, we're still going to.
We're doing that now. So we, yeah, so we had talked about leaving that practice in place and then writing it into the policy so that it's. Matt, did I miss anything? Or?
No.
Does that wrap that up?
Yeah. That was a short one.
So do we have to take two votes? One to waive the first reading and then one to approve?
The policy already allows for a waiving of the first reading, so we don't need to take action on that. The committee just needs to approve the three policies. The waiving of the first reading was written into the policy on policy review. There is a policy for policy.
Okay. So I can, I'll just take a motion on all three. So I can, I'll just take a motion on all three, on all three. Okay, so I'll take a motion on the revisions of purchasing, regional school district purchasing authority and procurement requirements.
So most.
Motion made by Matt?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're going to pass over unit A MOA until the next meeting.
That's right.
Superintendent?
Yes.
And next on the agenda is item H, superintendent, middle of the year evaluation feedback.
Yes.
Erin?
Jason had this in his hands just a few hours ago, so we are a little behind. But we're, we're wrapping up the MOY for Jason, which he presented to us on April 11 with his evidence. So honestly, I'm just going to give a summary here, which 100% of us answered and on target for all of your goals. With one on the district goal, district of one where all are welcome and belong, health and wellness goal, one earmarking, that was off target. And you have a copy of this for your comments, and we will be moving into your end of year shortly. So if you want to have a meeting, but sorry that this was delayed.
No worries.
But basically, the feedback shows that you're on target for.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments on that?
I just want to thank everyone for getting into me.
You for organizing it. It's a lot, too.
I'd like to thank Erin for her persistence in getting everyone to
Yes.
Complete that.
Their deadlines.
I'm speaking of my own personal experience. I'm going to, I, I have to, another commitment to go to tonight, and I'm going to ask that the board consider, the committee consider taking out of order in the superintendent report and go to the business office reorganization. If there's no issue with that? Okay. So the report of the superintendent, Mr. Superintendent, if you don't mind going to that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Then I'll hand the meeting over to Tara.
Perfect. So, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. And I'm going to, I'm going to just kind of tee this up and then hand it over to Joe. But now that Joe has been with us for a few months, and he's got a really good handle on all things FY '24 and FY '25, and has spent a lot of time looking at the structure of the business office, both the positions in district and the accounting firm that we use outside are kind of our third party, our assistant treasurer. Joe has a recommendation, which I very much support, and a change that we would like to make. So in your packet, there are a few handouts. There are two pages. One is titled, "The Business Operations Organizational Chart." And then the other is a memo that Joe sent to me on June 6th outlining the cost impact analysis for moving away from the contractual accounting services and the in-district accounts receivable position to having one district, full-time district accountant. And so before Joe gets into the weeds of that, I just want to share, I think this is the right move for a variety of reasons. One of the pieces that I just want to put at the forefront of the conversation is we went without a finance director for almost two years. And, you know, we had some, you know, interns here and there. Having a bench in district with a full-time accountant that's actually working in the system 12 months, every day, all day, for essentially a budget-neutral cost, I think would help significantly, not just the day-to-day operations of the business office and with our finances, but it would actually build a bench that, you know, God forbid, we're ever in a situation like that. Again, we actually have a full-time accountant on staff every day in the weeds of all of our accounts that knows what's going on. We definitely, you know, did well and made it through those couple of years and two budget cycles. But I think when we look at the overall health of the operation and where it's a fiscally, essentially a fiscally-neutral move, it makes a lot of sense. But Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about the logistics.
Sure, thank you. Just to add to what the superintendent did mention, too, one of the, one of the other positives I see in this is it's going to provide oversight on me. Right now, you know, you don't want me reconciling cash, posting journal entries and approving payments. We need somebody else that, and Ron, who is the third-party CPA, does do the reconciliations now. We want to maintain that, make sure that separation of duties is there. My journal entries and my activity has to go through somebody, too, just to have a second set of eyes on it. And I think it's going to provide that, that internal controls that we need to strengthen. It's also going to start to take some of the responsibilities, and the district's done a great job over the past two years keeping things running. But as things, everybody's branched out and taken on little jobs beyond their job description, really, to keep things running, we need to bring all that back in and put the responsibility on the department or the person or the individual that should have that responsibility. As far as the budget goes, it will be a budget-neutral move. The, the, the costs that we're spending for the CPA firm right now, plus that part-time position we're talking about for accounts receivable, should compensate the new individual under the, under the same amount of money. So I don't see a downside to this. I do see all positive, and I think it's a good step in like, like the superintendent said, if God forbid something happens to me, you're not going to be in that same position again. You'll have somebody that can at least maintain, keep things organized and keep things moving.
And that cost analysis is on that second page. It's the memo.
Yes.
From June 6th. That shows the replacement, you know, that basically the cost. So essentially, we're spending $81,699 now for a part-time account receivable staff member and for our accounting firm. So what we would recommend is moving at top salary, a salary of $85,000, and again, that's the top salary, but we wouldn't go beyond that. And so we'd have about a $5,300, a little more than that overage, if we had someone at the $85,000 salary.
And the salary range I projected for this is between 75 and 85. So it all depends on experience and, you know, the individuals that apply.
Anybody have any questions on that? So, Mr. Superintendent, you're looking for a, a motion to approve the reorganization in the, in the business office?
Yes.
Would that, does that, are we looking for a motion? Does that include?
Yep. Yeah, and you have a job description.
Yeah, so that you got a separate. There's a job description as well?
Where is that?
That.
It was separately with this. There you go.
So we have the, the reason this was not in the packet was because we have this service already, but it's outside of the system. So the finance subcommittee, when we met on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday this week, thought it'd be a good idea to bring the job description forward for approval as well. Because while we have the service, we don't have the full-time position in the district. We have the contractual service outside the district. So that's in front of you.
So essentially, this brings an in-house accountant?
Yes.
Or less to, which?
Is it, is the qualifications in account, accounting qual, or is it, what are the?
If you look on the, yeah, I mean, yeah, my apologies, it's two-sided. On the backside, it runs through all the qualifications.
What, I'm sorry. When is the contract for that third party of?
June 30th.
June 30th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did, we spoke with both of, we didn't want to have this public discussion without speaking with both of the individuals, and both of them were fine. I mean, they understood completely and makes sense. Particularly when you look at the, the resources we're spending and versus the service we get. We get far more service in bringing a full-time accountant on board instead of a, you know, a part-time.
Yeah. And this was a 12-month position in-house every time?
Eight hours a day, yes.
Full-time. Opposed to like a consultant.
Like 12 months.
Yeah. Non-union 12 months, year-round, full-time.
I assume we're still going to be able to use this para somewhere else?
Yes. Yeah, the para will go back into. Her position full-time. So she's kept completely whole. There's no issues with the union. There's no issues with her, or, you know, salary or anything along those lines. And then we just wouldn't renew our contract with the CPA. We also didn't want to make any changes to the business office until we had a new full-time director and if you're kind of wondering why we waited to do this, the, the second part of it was I didn't, as we were down a person, I certainly didn't want to remove the finance person we did have there. And Ron was incredibly helpful and supportive during all of that time that we were without a finance director. And we did, we had a very nice discussion with Ron yesterday, and he certainly stood.
Are we still going to use his services for anything?
No.
He's still available to us. He offered his services for anything we need. There might, might be some crossover that has to take place, but.
Initially, but not.
Not, not, not ongoing, no.
Would the new position be listed as like the assistant treasurer, the way Ron is always listed as that?
It would fill that role, but we would post the position as the district accountant. But they would fill the role of the assistant treasurer for the school committee.
Which is an existing position.
That is, yes.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
It's just, we have a subcontract, we sub it up.
That was why, it was like, do we bring the job description or, it was, it was like a shade of gray there, but we certainly couldn't hurt.
Right. Any other questions on that? So I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve the business office reorganization, which includes the updated job description.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Is that you, Carrie? Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, this time I'm going to hand the meeting over to Tara, the vice chairman, and I will see you on July 8th, if not before.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank Ron for his keeping us on track.
Absolutely.
As Erin knows, turbulent times and, you know, that, I mean, Matt helped us through as well.
But, but in the absence of Matt and then in the absence of, like, he was doing it all.
Yes, he was.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, to keep moving. So the next item is to review our school year 2425 student handbooks, and our principals are here this evening to talk about those. I don't know if you all want to come down together. I know you're going to present separately, but it's up to you. And in your package, you had the cover page that outlined, as, as we normally do, what the changes are to the handbooks or the recommended changes to the, to the handbooks, and then the pages in which you can find the changes. And then you actually had the red line handbooks themselves. So there's a lot of, a lot of paper with that, but we wanted to make sure you had it. Hopefully, everybody got their handbooks on Friday of last week. We tried to get those out early so you had a chance to review everything before. Christina, do you want to tee us off here?
Just a little light reading for the weekend. Actually, ours wasn't too bad. We just did, basically, the bulk of our changes was reflecting what Millville Elementary will be now, pre-K to 3. So we did a lot of removals. You'll see throughout of grade four and five information. We updated some of the, like, it might have been like three, four, so we made it just say three. So we kind of did all that to reflect what Millville will look like. Again, the cover page will be updated. We'll update all the, the committee members, their roles, any district people and their roles. Update the calendar, all those typical updates. School hours, we're going to adjust those because our hours are going to change next year. So it's about 10 minutes, so we'll adjust that. And then we're just going to remove any of like the absent call-in number, the email for the JFK AFM complex. We're going to update it to just has Millville only. And then that was really the bulk of the, the programs. We did change health. So because, it's all two things. The health office, so I spoke with Karen Young. I shared her kind of what we had and asked what needed to be updated to reflect pre-K to 3. So I did, we did update those about the physical examinations because that was outdated. The vision and hearing screenings, and then the height and weight screenings that are done as well. So those were all reflected in what was in there. So that was shared with her to, to update. And then we updated our report card this year. So I was up here a couple of months ago for that. So we're updating the, the rubric changes on that as well. Disciplinary measures, we had that, we're removing the bullets and replacing it kind of with the more friendly language. So it's talking about minor offenses and major offenses. There was a couple of pages that was kind of on the harsh side. I'm trying to figure out if this was the exact page. There was one that was like reprimand, and so we kind of took out, took out some of the language to make it reflect more pre-K to 3. While they could potentially be infractions of that nature, we, the team that I had worked with to do this, we kind of adjusted it a little bit to be a little more kid-friendly. And then bus rules, we just have to, spelling, spelling error. And that was really big. Just, we had a couple of spelling and punctuation errors. And then we are adjusting because last year we added the no parents picking up prior to 15 minutes before the end of the school day. They just have to go in the parent pickup line. We did just, again, just adjust that time to 2:55 to reflect the 15 minutes. And then one thing that we have, we wanted to make sure, because our policy currently is they have to be fever-free for 24 hours to return to school. We just put that it was fever-free 24 hours instead of just fever-free. So we gave that more specific guidelines. And then with, with the early childhoods, we sometimes have accidents, and not only bathrooming accidents, but spilled milk, falling in the mud. So a lot of things where we need additional clothing. So we kind of reflected that, you know, if there's, if your child may need additional clothing, please make sure you pack that. So we do have some students that do need additional clothing for bathrooming, so that, we did ask for that, and we just updated that. We removed instrumental music policy because there's no band in the pre-K to 3. Hoodie, we updated hoodies just to say hoods worn on head, so it doesn't sound like they can't wear a hoodie to school, that they can't wear their hood on their head when they're in school. And then just updated the administrator determination of if something is violating the dress code. There's been instances where like a child's worn like a crop shirt, where I've said just go put another shirt underneath it or change a shirt or put a tank top underneath it, so. That's really been the bulk. Like, the bulk of it was really just removing. We did, Mr. Eisenberg did, I think I might have missed that one. Mr. Eisenberg did update health just to read it, because it said health for fifth grade. He just updated the wording for pre-K to 3 because we're going to be adding PE, like, health components as part of the PE class. So the last chunk of the time, either, we said about 15 to 20 minutes of the PE class. He, Mr. Eisenberg does a lot of games focused on health. So, and the health systems. So he, we, he does it anyways. We just put that in the handbook, so. Any questions? That's it.
I did have a couple.
Sure.
Probably more general. The headlights, page 40. There's, the bullets three and four, they're not numbered, but the third and fourth bullets, they almost like conflict. Like, it says, "Students will be allowed to return to school after being treated." And then it says, "The presence of headlights will not prevent a child from returning to school, however if they're found." It just seems like they, they conflict to me. Because isn't the rule like they don't actually have to flee? There's like a whole.
Except for if it's, Karen can answer that better. I feel like if it's eggs or larvae, I think that they, that they, there's some part of that, and Karen has a, because I've had to call her and say, hey, what's the policy on this? So, yeah.
Do you want, I can get Clarice on?
Yeah, if you want to just clean up three, no, we're only.
Oh, now I'm itching.
Bullets three and four on page 40.
On 40, yep.
Okay. Yeah, no problem.
And then Chromebooks. K through three, they don't get a Chromebook, right? They just use them?
They have all, they all have one in the class. They don't take them home. Three takes them home.
Okay.
But K through two do not take them home.
Okay, because I was going to say, I think some of the wording is a little over, like, it's, it's everything that's in the other grades.
We kept.
But it makes sense to keep it.
We kept it the same language. I think we actually used it off of the middle school one last year or the year before. Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, so we did change October 19th to read Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, so just make sure that that's noted. I noticed that in all three of your.
Oh, okay.
So just, it is noted on the, the school calendar.
Do we have a pen?
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send the email to all of us.
Thank you.
It's easy.
It's just easier.
Actually, I can put it right on here.
Tara, so can I move to?
Yes.
Good.
Do they even have anything else first? Yeah.
We spent a lot of time on the handbook because, you know, we're merging two schools. So I, I want to put out there, and because it's recording, I want parents to know that, again, we are maintaining the elementary environment for four and fifth grade, but we're also not taking away that sixth and seventh grade, you know, that level of environment for them. So I have a lot of people on this committee looking through the handbook. There's a lot of redundancy in the handbook, if you will, so we delete a lot of things that are already mentioned. So, you know, the, the journal stuff is updated calendar. I, on page seven, we did say delete portrait of graduate. That time, we didn't finish our merging. We now finish, so we're going to add it back in. It was really, actually, it was a really great process that we did together, merging the portrait of graduate. Jason even made us a bracelet, a helmet. So it was just a very productive process. Update school time. The committee wanted to add backpack, well, they knew, they already had backpack, but some girls, they want to carry their purse. And as you know, we have a lot of issues at the middle school with the issues that people know. They don't want kids to carry purses around the school. There's no need to. So we added that, and we delete the regular school attendance is defined as three excuse absences. That didn't even make sense. Almost like you encourage them to be absent. So committee wanted to take that out. And then delete after third day of absent, blah, 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 blah. Homework will be available. And also delete student will be allowed a number of days absent, plus one day to make up. They felt like they're putting a restriction on that. The teachers want to give, work with students. If they need more time, they want to make sure they have more time. So they wanted to take that out. We added the tear system. I shared that with the middle school folks. I shared that with the middle school folks, that what we do this year really on using that tear system at the complex. So like, you guys, you can see tear one, this is what we do, tear two, tear three. So we added that to the handbook.
Is that per quarter or semester? For the whole year, two unexcused absences?
These absences per quarter.
Okay.
And then delete after five excuse absence, the principal, personally. Just so, it's kind of repeat information. On page 10, we're deleting, in order to participate after school. It say that they cannot be dismissed earlier than 11:00 AM or giving any, unless the dismissal is them to excuse. We changed it to when a student is absent from school, they may not attend any school function unless it is an excuse absent. And then in order to be eligible to participate, blah, 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 blah. I call Keith because I want to align that with the high school. So we got that language from the high school handbook. On page 11, we delete kind of, you know, plagiarism. So we added that cheating included not limited. We did add AI because it's just out of control with that. So we want to bullet them so it's clear to students and parents. So we delete that, but we're adding it in bullets. Page 11, we just changed choice of teacher section because these, in the old language was, you know, student kind of may request. We're not doing that. I can tell you, I spent at least two months with the teachers placing students. So there's no need, we work very hard making sure, you know, the student combination is, you know, will be productive, will be effective for them, for learning. So there's no need to request to change. We only have three teams. And then page 11, change, request schedule change. Change to schedule change will be considered only if all the following criteria met. We really want the guidance department involved with that. Instead of student, just go to the main office, I want to change, you know, classes. If I go, go in too fast, you can stop me. Page 11, change it to extra help from teacher. We laugh about this one because in the old language, you say just make appointment with teachers. But you can't, they don't drive. So we have to make sure the parents, you know, they have transportation. So we changed that. It is their responsibility to request, teachers are here. So if they want extra help, they need to make arrangement.
Can I jump on that, Jenny? And I think in the MOA, there is language that states that the extra help session can also be triggered by the principal or by the teacher. So it tried to get, and parent, it's all inclusive. So it tried to make sure that anybody that needs to identify that extra help is necessary, they have an opportunity to do that.
The next few things is really separating sixth and seventh grade. Grading policy, progress report, honor roll, citizens of the month. Again, we added citizens of the month select based on POG. And then we added the homework, added, you know, the minutes of homework. On page 12, we changed national, this one, I'm reading it, I'm, I need to look into that, I'm not sure. Jason maybe can jump in. National Junior Honor Society. When we were working on it, I was told by the committee that grade six.
So it's the end of grade seven, they get inducted in and then it's.
That's inaccurate.
Yeah.
So we will change that.
Yeah. And so then.
There's actually no change to whatever.
It's grade eight.
So I'll highlight that, so I'll make sure I change that. Page 12 and 13, student ambassador, grade four, five, six. And actually, that was our mistake, it should be seven as well. What happened is if they are student ambassadors, once they become student councils, they have to give up their seats. Because we want to give other students opportunities to be student leaders. So we're going to explain all that ones, you know, for when they apply. Promotion for, promotion and retention with grade four and five is very different than grades six and seven. So we added that language to it. It's more like a collaboration with family. And then page 13, we added grade six and seven. Because that paragraph should be just grades six and seven. And just language, Blackstone School District Administration and Teaching Staff. Page 14 and 15, personal electronic device. We are removing that. Because we provide student with Chromebooks, there's no reason for them to bring in their own. Page 15 and 16, I will explain this. Staff are asking for a table of different infractions. Because what, the old handbook right now is just a bunch of paragraphs. They want something in table. So we, you know, we're going to put that and, and condense them. It's a lot of redundancy. And then discipline consequence. And you will see like first event, second event, and third in the handbook chart. Section to be deleted is disciplined actions because it's all, will be in, in the table. Page 20 and 21, our coaches really want to add the MIA policy, add the link to the handbook. Dress code, we're having a lot of problem with pajamas. So they want to add the pajamas. No pajamas allowed unless it's Spirit Day. And then adding clothing accessory to no foul or offensive image. And we also call Keith on that as well, the hood and bandanas. Page 25, student council, we added grade six and seven because it's not offered to four and five. And we moved the nomination and election process. You know, we moved that because eighth grade is no longer in the middle school. We want to move student expectation to page eight after general information. It's just the order would make sense. Page 38, loaner Chromebooks. Student, I expect to bring their Chromebooks. And if we have loaner Chromebooks. We do have a lot of issues at the middle school that they ran out of loaner Chromebooks. So if we don't have it, they can't have one, obviously. We delete the consequences because it's already in the technology use policy.
I have just a couple. I know you, on page eight, you do have like the hours as far as turn off cell phones by and remain in caf. But is, is there a way to actually put the school hours somewhere in here?
Yes.
Just like the full start. And then I know the other schools both had it in there, so just to have it pop somewhere. And then, I guess the backpack thing, I've always like wondered why they can't have them? I know they get to use them back in the high school, right? They're, because they have to, actually, they don't get lockers in the high school. You mentioned it kind of was saying, you know, the issues that happen in this building. But I don't know, I just feel like carrying a backpack is.
See, I kind of had a question about the purses.
Yeah.
For the girls.
Yeah, they sometimes need them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that they can't, they just can't carry it around if there's a need to take their purse to the bathroom. It's not a problem.
Okay.
I, I think we're trying to avoid, the committee feel that we try to avoid a lot of problems they have this year. Just to, I came from the middle school, I taught in the middle school, and then we never allow kids to carry backpack. And also is like the district I came from was like weapons and stuff, you know. But I, I think it's the things that, what's going on right now, they don't want them to carry them.
There are not weapons in the building.
No, 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 no.
Wait, they're probably carrying their cell phone.
Let me clarify that, my, my past life.
Wanted to make sure to our families tuning in at home that they're not. I don't want anyone misreading that.
Can we just, you know, have it out in the open that we're looking for vaping products, I'm sure? And we're looking for cell phones?
Yep.
I don't think it's anything that we need to step around so, you know, just so we feel more comfortable talking about it. Which I'm fully in support of. So if that's what we're trying to, you know, mitigate the use of, that's fine. I agree that, you know, if we need, you know, purses and whatnot for privacy reasons, that should be allowed.
Taking it to the bathroom, taking a picture, yeah, I just, yeah, we try to avoid all that.
Yeah. The pajamas, kind of. So you're, it's going to be the only one because the other two handbooks don't say no pajamas, but.
I don't, yeah, I don't want them wearing pajamas.
I don't think it was in your handbook, though.
I don't know if it is.
We define pajamas in some way.
Well, that's the other thing, because it's like, it's typically pajama bottoms, right? That the kids are.
We have kids coming with pajamas top two here.
So maybe it needs to, I mean, I think it's a lot of flannel pants, too. Like, it should say something like pajamas including.
Okay.
Flannel wear, flannel pants? Or are you seeing other thi, onesies? I don't know, what, what's the trend?
They're wearing those nightcaps that they used to wear with the, are they carrying around like?
Pajamas are not as much of an issue pre-K to three, I would say it's.
It's more to.
It's older, like four.
Sure.
I don't know, because I'm not here, so I don't know about middle school. I have a lot of issues with.
To your pajama, to your pajamas, do you have the dress code thing in here where it says that you choose, you determine what follows dress code? So I guess to me, the pajamas would be determined by you.
We can add the language.
So maybe this line.
Yeah, that last line.
You know what I mean, just to, to back you up, like, you can. Yeah, subject to administration, yes.
Administration makes the final decision.
Yours has it like that, right?
You have.
It's probably something that's going to need to be part of like first day discussions.
Yeah.
What'd you say, first day?
I think you might have to have a, oh God, an assembly about.
Expectation.
About not wearing them. But I haven't, I haven't been around here in the morning in a year now, but it was an abundance of attire for this building.
And I get the part, I think it's somewhere about being neat, like, I get that. But, you know, like, most kids are wearing leggings or yoga pants and boys wear sweatpants. So it's, I mean, how much different is a pair of flannel pajama bottoms? But I think it's that whole like neatness factor, and I think you called it out somewhere. Dressed appropriately. Reflecting your educational process, so, I don't know, maybe that does kind of explain why I know DJ's.
Yeah, we actually have kids come in with faux pajamas and slippers.
Yeah, I'm like, maybe that's what needs, no slippers. Proper footwear.
Including slippers.
Including slippers.
No pajamas.
Although then you've got like those Uggs slippers.
Well, they're, they're slippers. I, I would have loved if someone else told my kid they could not wear them to school.
They didn't have soul, they weren't considered slippers anymore.
Sorry, it's dress code, you can't.
Very gray. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to read the wording that I neglected to put on here, I just noticed it. So for K, the health says, for K to three health, during the course of the school year, K to three students will be taught the following health topics. The three parts of the health, physical, mental, and social health. Physical fitness, muscle strength, and aerobic capacity, and the importance of, and value of regular physical activity, nutrition, and the importance of sleep. So those were the health topics. So I just want to make sure that's at that. And I can, I'm going to email out to you and then send you the.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I jump, just because of the health thing? With the new health standards, the health, our health educators are working with our lead coach. And they're actually working regionally with other school systems in the Blackstone Valley. And we'll be putting together a comprehensive kind of scope and sequence of topics at the various grade levels. That will come before the committee. So before anything is implemented or things are done, just I want to make sure the committee knows that. That they're working on that now, and that information will come before the school committee. So just forecasting of the topics that you have in your handbook might ultimately change moving forward, but they wouldn't before there's a public conversation about that and what the topics would be and the curriculum and the resources and materials. And the school committee might remember that you all had approved a policy where the school will send out the resources and topics to families so that they can see the materials before anything may be taught. I know there was some question ticker around the, the new health framework. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that we're very much aware of that. And we have a plan for rolling that out. And you will be hearing more from our health educators in the fall.
Thank you.
Hi, so I did not put every little change where it said eight, nine. If that was something that you were looking for, I apologize. But like the, the date and everything will be updated just like they, they all said. So that will all be reflective of who is here. On page 12, it's not necessarily a scheduled change, it's actually meaning it's a, related to schedule, their schedule, their class schedule change and when we're going to allow that to happen. So it's 10 days after in the first, in the first semester in September. And then when we have the second semester, they've got a, I think it's February 4th or 3rd is the next scheduled change. So that is what we mean when it says schedule, it's not like the calendar. Again, changing a date. No changes to the language, just moving device to Chromebook because that's what the device is that we have. For attendance policies, we're, we're tightening up the attendance policies, just language. In that open-ended medical notes are not going to be accepted. We've had some people, we've had some doctors or physicians say, you know, they're being treated. And then we have to keep going back and going back for excused absences. So we're just asking that there is actually a date so that that could coincide for a checkup. And then if we needed to continue that, we would have an updated medical note. Because, you know, having something in September, that may be very different when we get to April or May. So that's the, the piece with that. Our administrative 50s are for credit, and that's based on attendance. We've moved that to reflect the more of the, what the Department of Education says is chronically absent, which is 18 days. Move that to four days in part because what we're adding for restorative, so restorative in the past is if you're missing attendance and you're over the attendance, you can stay after school or in the morning with Keith for restorative to restore your grade. You're, if you're getting administrative 50, you could have an 85 in the class, but you've blown the attendance policy. You make up those days, then you get those back. We have found a bit of, I don't want to say abuse, but, well, if I'm late or if I'm not coming in, I only have to stay an hour after school to make up that day. So to make that more of a deterrent and wanting the kids, and we're in, you know, attendance is a hot topic in the nation right now. We're also adding, and you'll see a little bit later, we're adding a Saturday restorative to that. So that's the change for as far as the attendance is concerned. We'll be going over all of that. And then seniors for the last quarter is changed from three to two. Lots of bus passes and that is, is the end of the year. And we're not getting buses because I don't have, you know, I don't, somebody needs me at their house. We're getting bus passes because I want to go hang out with my boyfriend or girlfriend, which is all fine. But, you know, we're going to just remind you that you're going to need to ride your assigned bus unless, you know, other special circumstances require. Another piece we looked at moving is for, is to participate in extracurricular activities. It was that you only had to pass five course, I mean, at four courses, we're moving that to five. So four is the standard for MIAA for any extracurricular activities or MSAA for participation in, and our cheer. We are moving that to five. The reason that it's five is because somebody may be enrolled in a study period, and so that doesn't hold credit or weight. So that's why we went to that. I will just throw it out there that coaches, et cetera, have the ability to raise that bar. And in fact, the football coach has done that and said that his students will need to pass all subjects to be eligible. So that is the opportunity, but for art, our sake, it's five classes. Dances, we're, we're very flexible, we want dances to happen. But for a lot of times, you need to have counts and for chaperones and a lot of things. So we're just asking that the tickets are sold a week before, and then we have a hard deadline. That also makes it easier to cancel dances if we need to. The change for middle school students will not be permitted, that is for the prom. They are welcome to our homecoming dance, we are not permitting eighth graders to attend the prom. Times for our school start is changing there. We've mentioned, we've, that's reflected at the beginning of the day. It's also reflected in our in-house internal suspension or, internal suspension or for restorative as well. We've added that Saturday restorative piece. It reads that, I just want to highlight the language for you because that is different. If I can find it. What page did it say? Sorry. It's from eight until eleven in the morning, um, on Saturday, that will come already out of the stipend, um, that we have for restorative. It will be in our, um, LMC. Uh, students in need of making up unexcused absences can do so by serving restorative on Saturday. Students must come prepared to work, no cell phones, no head down, um, on the desk will be allowed, bright and chipper, and happy to be there. Um, last piece is just cellphone, uh, usage. Uh, we're just, again, tidying that up, um, and there's some compound errors there, uh, apologize for that, is, um, you know, they can listen to it. We, we only allow one Chrome, um, one earbud. Um, there's specific designated times where you can have it. Um, and every paper is kind of my catchphrase, be present fifty-three minutes at a time. Um, this will be new because our eighth graders will get to have a little bit more flexibility. Um, we have found great, uh, success with this, um, in that we have a very clear, the teacher has a warning if the second time we see the cellphone, it goes on the desk. If you do not comply, then Keith or I will gladly visit and escort your phone to the main office, um, and, and contact parents if we continue to have issues. As if you come to the off, into the office, Linda has several friends, uh, cellphone friends on the, on her, on her desk, that, um, they just need to stay there until you can show that you can be responsible and use it the right way. Um, so that's tidying it up. And then, again, just language expulsion to exclusion. Can we just, I'm mentioning, we have all this language too?
That's all then, yeah, yeah, in your packets you have, Jill was just mentioning. There is, um, we made, you might remember, we made this change in this, during the school year already. But the language around the bullying and anti-bullying and.
Suspension.
That's, that's all the legal notices?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we updated, but just so you had a hard copy in your packet, we included that as well. Those are just all the statutory components we had to change after our.
Cheer focus monitoring.
Yeah, our TFM. So you've already seen it, but we included it anyways, so you have it.
So I do have a couple.
Please.
Um, on page eleven.
Mm-hmm.
The testing, I don't know if you just want to add grade eight, because they do MCAS as well.
Thanks for grabbing that. Yep, we thought we did, that, that's perfect, so on page eight, hold on.
Easy little thing, and then.
I'm ready.
Okay, and on page fifteen, you have National Honor Society, but now with eighth, do you need a National Junior Honor Society blurb?
Thank you, NJHS.
And then twenty-nine and thirty, they're references to COVID?
Oh, I, I, that was deleted.
They deleted, okay.
That was, that was deleted afterwards, it should have been deleted last time. I, I think they were using a two years, yes, so it's deleted.
Because we deleted that too, right?
Yes, two years ago, yes.
Doesn't exist.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why that is, was still there, but yep, COVID, that's all deleted.
And then thirty, page thirty-six, the hoodies common? I know the other schools both put just the hoods, like you can wear a hoodie, you just can't have your hood on, I don't know if you want to have that too?
Okay, so just the.
Page thirty-six, it's, uh, can wear a hoodie.
I think it was hooded sweatshirt.
A hooded sweatshirt.
Yeah, which says inappropriate, includes hoodies, but I think it's the hood, you can wear a hoodie, but not your hood.
Sure, I'll make sure that it's the same language, um, as the other schools.
Yeah, yeah, easy enough.
They all wear hoodies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With their PJs.
Uh, that is not in my.
No, they can wear PJs.
I, I would have a revolt if I didn't allow flannel.
Yeah.
Pants, from my children.
Yep, yeah, I have a couple too. Yep, there you go, ladies. That was it for me. Page four, the calendar, just to reflect the new one that.
Yes, I, I wrote, I already wrote that, said that to, to Linda, every, all of that stuff will be updated, all the, all the people, personnel, and everything will be.
And then page thirty-three, the times, they're marked tardy, just to reflect the new start time. Give the old one on there. Old times for tardy.
So, on thirty-eight, with the middle school, um, are we still calling the eighth grade middle school Jason, or is it?
No, they're, they're in the high school.
So I.
Just say grade eight?
I think it should specify, eighth grade, on number five, it should say, eighth grade students will not be permitted, will, no. Will be permitted to attend the high school dances with the exception of prom.
Okay.
Because then at the bottom, it says, at the junior, senior prom, the underclassmen.
You have to be minimum.
It says, um.
Minimum.
Specify grade nine.
It says, must be at least a ninth grade student.
Yeah.
Well, it says.
And they can't be twelfth.
Each couple must be a current student at BMR. So I'm like, well, they're, so they're at BMR, but they're, so I didn't know if we were still distinguishing the eighth graders as middle school students?
No.
Or?
No, they're part of us.
BMRHS, yeah.
So I like that, thank you. So not, we're just going to call it the grade eight, yep.
So, or, and anywhere else in here that we might have used the word middle school.
Sure.
Should probably just be.
Remove middle school.
Eighth grade versus.
Yeah, I guess then, that also cleans up the no eighth graders trying to take their seventh grade friend to a high school dance either.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, it's very clear, clear in here, where no middle, it says, I, I just read the whole thing, but.
Right.
It says no middle school student.
Well, it says middle school is permitted, so by changing that to eighth grade students are permitted.
Then we won't have a problem with there being a seventh grade, right?
Oh, yeah, you'd have all the seventh grade.
Yeah, nope.
There's forty coming tomorrow, that's why we're having a party here.
No, thanks, I apologize for those errors, I appreciate the sixteen cents of us.
Um, and I did not see it, and I, I really didn't catch my attention until Jenny mentioned on hers where she said she checked with Keith, for the attendance on the half day. Is that, so Jenny changed hers from, it cannot be dismissed earlier than eleven, but changed to half day. That is what it already says in here, is that what?
This is what Keith told me.
I think it says ten thirty in here.
It says ten forty-eight to ten thirty-one.
He didn't tell, he didn't change the time in ours?
No, it is, it is.
Yeah.
It's like ten thirty something.
It's ten forty-eight to ten thirty-one now.
Okay, good, it is.
But I think, no, I think that's, I think that's a little different, that's the half day, that's just telling what time the half day is dismissed. But I think what Erin's saying is that they can still go to an event if they're in school until at least ten thirty.
At BMR.
But Jenny's saying the kids can't go to something if they leave early.
Day absent. No, well, I, I thought that's what she said, but am I misunderstanding it? Because it, it's changed to, when a student is absent from school, they may not attend a school function unless it's an excused absence. In order to be eligible to participate in extracurricular ac- activity offered by the school, the student must be in school for half of the school day.
Correct, yeah.
So what was changed was, like, if BMRs, and I'm thinking of prom, they all leave early, right? They leave right at that minute.
That's right.
So, uh, did yours change to at the half day, or is it a, a time?
No, it's a, it's, it's just the half day. And they'll, and they asked what it was, I think that's, that's just the generic.
Okay, so it's actually moved up?
Yeah, which the half day is the ten thirty-one.
They can make it earlier.
Start of lunch.
They'll know to the minute.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the, the part they highlight.
Can you get it two o'clock?
Oh, yeah, they'll highlight.
So, we, and these are, these are changes we have been talking about. We've solicited feedback on the Saturdays, uh, the Saturday, um, restoratives, um, on the students, they're aware that that is.
Do we have to offer busing for that?
Hmm?
Do we have to offer busing for that?
It's a, if it's a consequence, I do not believe so. I didn't at my other district, so.
Okay.
We don't bus them if they're coming in early for it, or staying late for it.
We don't have a late.
We don't have a late bus.
We do, we just, the kids don't use them, so we don't run them. But we have the money in the budget for them.
They're not cool anymore. We did have one. All right, that was all mine, thank you.
Not on the list yet, but, um, all right, any further discussion? Is there a motion to accept the handbooks as discussed with revisions or discuss? So moved. Thank you, Carrie, second.
Second.
Tara? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, intentions? Aye, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all your work.
So I just want to point out that we approved MES, Middle School and BMR.
Oh, thank you for clarifying.
Uh, no, I'm just saying, so does it kind of like, take away the complex? But like.
Yeah.
With our, with our restructuring or reconfiguration.
Move along, Jason, with your.
Okay, can you move?
Yes.
Great.
When you are.
Um, so I just have one other item I report, I just want to give a couple of updates. Um, uh, I'm actually going to ask Jill to do the director athletics and student life search. Um, and Carrie and Tara certainly jump in on that too, you've been very involved in that process. Before they do that, I'll just do quickly where we are with our vacancies. Um, we are in very good shape. Um, we currently have, uh, an offer out to a candidate for our LPN position, so we're waiting for her to get back to us. Uh, we have a, um, candidate that we are working with for our grade one position, and a candidate that we are working with for our kindergarten position. Um, we have, uh, over thirty applications for our history position at, uh, the high school, and Jill has already started interviewing candidates. Um, we have nine applicants, uh, currently for our grade seven ELA position, and we have almost twenty applicants for our guidance position at the high school. Uh, everything else is filled.
Did you fill the engineering?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if I missed that.
Yeah, so we, we, everything is, is full. Um, and Jill's still working on pairs, but, um, I think we have three of those currently. But the rest of the classroom teacher positions, um, we either have a significant number of applicants and interviews have started, or we have finalists. So we're, we are in very good shape, uh, for this time. Jill, do you, and Carrie and Tara want to jump in and give an update on the director of athletics and student life?
So we started our second round, um, of interviews, and we actually just had them this week. Um, we interviewed some really strong candidates during this round, and the committee, we had so many wonderful candidates this round, that we actually moved three forward. Um, so in our first round, it was myself, we had our, um, human resources director, Jenny was there, Jill was there as principals, and then Carrie and Tara joined us for our first rounds, who identified three to move on. And part of our second round, they'll actually be meeting with our assistant principal, some students, and some community members. And to be able to give some feedback, and then the finals, this, they'll be moving forward and hopefully making a decision very soon. And that'll all be done by the middle of next week.
We set a target date for all of our vacancies to be filled by Friday, uh, the fourteenth, so we're, we're very close. The ones that we have the applications for, uh, they just were recent resignations. So the, the ones that were part of, um, you know, the notification that we gave, and I think it was March, those are, those are filled.
Carrie and Tara, I know if you had, I mean, you were both, again, spent a lot of time just.
All of them were pretty strong this time, and.
Yeah. Three very strong candidates. So we're looking forward to seeing a finalist from this come forward and be able to get someone in that position. And I will say, actually, each of them thought our model and the requirement of this position, the extra part of it, the, uh, student life, actually intrigued all of them.
Yes, they all, they all did say that, yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so it's good.
It's great. Uh, if there is nothing else on that, that concludes my report this evening.
Nice question about, I don't know if this is the right time, but any updates on the summer programming, or is that coming?
We did at the last, um, the May eighth, no, the May ninth meeting, we went through all the updates. It's, um, on our web page, is there all the programming that's available? Uh, the only thing we're not running this summer that we ran last summer, uh, was, we were put on a waitlist, uh, was the acceleration grant. But everything else we are running that we ran last, uh, summer. And the other thing that we're, that we added, uh, because, um, of the change in our seventh grade science teacher, we felt that the kids really missed out, um, this year because of that transition, so we're offering, um, we, we started as a seventh grade only, um, science camp, like an exploratory science camp. Um, we didn't get a ton of interest, it's being taught by one of our high school teachers, so we are going to open that up, um, to other grade levels. Uh, but it's going to be like a field trip-based, lab-based, um, science program for the summer. Um, and then, at the July eighth meeting, we can give a full update if people are, you know, folks, if the committee's interested in hearing, like, how many students and.
That's actually what I was, I, I knew that the, that some of the programs have been expanded and, um, the, the acceleration grant wasn't there. But I was wondering, do we know, like, participation numbers yet, or is that, have, have kids started signing up?
Yes, um, but we're still, they're still signing up, we haven't closed the, um, the window for that, so.
I know Mr. Rosendale is doing a stellar job at sending out communications, trying to grab the middle school students into it.
We're doing the enrichment camps again, which I know, um, the kids are looking forward to, the athletic enrichment, the music and band enrichment. Um, and then we have our credit recovery, uh, art enrichment, we have our credit recovery, we have the STEAM program. Um, our captains are going to be running the clinics again, I think they're in the process of setting those schedules up. Um, so, um, we definitely can get numbers at the July eighth meeting.
Any update, um, on the CCLC program with the extended hours? Is it capturing as many kids, or?
Yeah, so the enrollment, um, is full, and, yeah, and, um, we have, I didn't have it on this agenda because we're waiting on the amount, but we wrote, uh, an additional grant, um, and for the, for the Twenty First Century Program, we were awarded, we applied for sixty thousand. Uh, they haven't told us our award amount yet, but we were awarded something in this next round, so we're waiting to hear what that is, so that will be on the July eighth agenda.
And that's this summer, for the, the additional grant?
Effective, um, July one of twenty-four, we can start using the resources, which is great, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, summer's a great, uh, and we're also going to be doing the, um, summer, uh, breakfast and lunch program as well. Um, so not just to the kids that are in the program, but we'll be able to, if there are any eighteen and under, um, folks in the community that want to come down to the complex for lunch, certainly can do that, and we'll be, uh, feeding our kids all summer long as well. You don't have to be enrolled in a summer program to, to eat, but, so good for parents, if they're working and their kids are home and they want to jump on their bikes and run down, they can have lunch every day at no cost. Uh, that concludes my report, and we're good.
Are we moving on to, oh, business office?
Yeah.
So Joe, right?
Um, obviously, the personnel file is, you have that in there, just to be placed on file. Um, in your packet is the forecast for FY twenty-four. Uh, there's only a few changes on that forecast I'd like to point out. Um, I know the question came up at our last meeting about the athletics budget, that it was, you know, becoming severely overdrawn. In my research, I found that eighty-seven thousand dollars of the athletics budget was budgeted in the, um, athletic user fee fund, but all the expenses were being posted to the general fund. So I've gone through and moved those, uh, eighty-seven thousand expenses into the athletic user fee funds where they belong. And you'll notice that under extracurricular, that it's back in line with the budget, budgeted amount that we had, uh, posted into the general fund. The other change that I made, um, under tuitions, second to the last segment, the school choice sending and the charter school sending budgets, I had them in the, in the report backwards, I had to reverse them back to where they belong, so the budgets lined up to the expenditures. Uh, it's still projecting to be over budget by the amount you can see over at the far right, uh, but I did line them up properly. And towards the end, on the third page, you'll see that we are projected to meet the, um, school committee's expectations in our general fund at year end. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions off of this report if you have any.
Anyone see anything they want to ask about?
One other piece of information that you do have is a. One other piece of information that you do have is a, I prepared a schedule of our state aid. And it's comparing the budgeted amounts for F Y twenty-five and the original cherry sheet to the third revision of the cherry sheet that we just recently received. It's this page right here. It does show that our chapter seventy-eight is going up by just under a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, as well as our charter school tuition reimbursements increasing just under thirty thousand dollars. But on the flip side, our choice receiving, our school choice receiving tuition's going down by just under a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So the net effect to our budget for that is twenty-three thousand, three eighty-two additional in funding. On the other side, our estimated charges, charges, the school choice sending tuition and the charter school sending tuition's are both increasing to combined over forty-two thousand dollars. So the net impact at this point in time to F Y twenty-five is a hit to our budget of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Not a big number, but it'd be nice if, maybe there's a fourth rendition of the cherry sheet that kind of absorbs that for us. But again, it is, I've heard the phrase, it's a shell game, they give you here, they take away in another place. So I just wanted to make sure you're up to date on that, too.
Yeah, the chapter seventy increase looks great. And then you can see where, I mean, they have, they have one bucket of money, clearly, that they're just kind of moving things around and
Any questions on that? Let me move down the list to the middle school lighting project update. I'm in contact with our broker, with power management company. And I did find out that our credits can all be applied at one time if we need to. And that could be, the decision if the school committee would like to do that, we could. We can, what I found right now is we have a dual billing situation. Where, in other words, all our credits from our solar panel generations, all the credits being generated, they're all showing up on the national grid bill. But now that we have a brokerage firm that we're, we're using, Cursage and another Hudson Power, I believe, for our usage of electricity, they're not on a combined bill. So we have the credits for our supply line through national grid, but we're also paying the usage fees to these other companies. I have a meeting with them next week to confirm all this. But we're going to try to do a single billing setup, it should be set up where everything is coming onto the national grid bill. So now those credits can be applied to everything, and we won't have two separate buckets that we're working with. We're also going to be looking at, they have questions on how our credits are being allocated, so they want to fill me in on that next week, just to make sure we're allocating the credits properly to each location. And the nice part about this, too, is we can do a Schedule Z, I believe it's called, a few times a year. So if we see that there's a deficit happening in one building or one school, we can move some credits around to cover those. So the goal is to hopefully see that that, those solar credits are absorbing a majority of the cost of our electric use. So that's where we're at at this point in time. And I believe that we're still scheduled to start the, the lighting project here at the middle school at the, at the end of the school year.
That was an update the committee had asked for at the last, to come, to bring, Chuck's not here, I think Chuck had asked for it, or Dan, but it was to revisit the lighting.
That's it, then there was a surplus request, I guess was next?
Yes, there's a, in your packet, there's just a request from our, from Julie Wolford. We have, the tech team has done a great job of basically taking our broken, I mean, like, to the point where you can't repair them, Chromebooks, and essentially hollowing them out. Taking all the pieces so that we can repair the ones on our own, they just want to get rid of the shells, like the, basically like the framing of the Chromebook, everything that we can use we'll pull out of them. So they're looking for surplusing about eighty shells and a hundred broken frames.
Where are they disposing?
We would have a company, like an e-waste company
Okay, so it's a cost, is it a cost?
There is a cost to it, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure off the hand what, what that, the amount is, but I can find that out for you.
Is there a motion to approve the request for a surplus of Chromebook shells and broken frames? Is there a second? Tara, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
I just have it.
I can send the amount and the weekly update.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious.
No, it's a great, and, great question.
All right, thank you, Joe. Facilities report? Do we have a copy in here, are you taking that?
Yeah, Joe is also going
Joe got it, thank you.
I'll just read through what Scott has here. As you know, at the high school, the, the front steps were replaced, the old concrete patch was jackhammered out. The new concrete was poured on the evening of May twenty-fourth, and the stairs were back in use on Tuesday, the morning of May twenty-seventh. I believe Scott also mentioned that they're going to come back and do a skim coat on top of that, over the next, probably next week. Here at the middle school, there was a power surge that caused one of the generators to stop up and run. The update he has is that FM generator was on site June third to replace the control panel. The generator ran for one hour to test to confirm that there were no other issues, so that seems to be repaired. Also, a back bolt preventer that is installed on the main water line went through the biannual inspection and passed the test, however, there was a steady drip coming from the device. Joe Roy's Plumbing is ordering a rebuild kit and will be rebuilding the device as soon as the kit comes in. The rebuild kit was the least expensive option as a full replacement, as opposed to spending nine thousand dollars. So with any luck, that'll, that'll take place and won't be an issue. A storm drain broke, located on the driveway by the cafeteria windows, has developed a sinkhole around it. This has been an ongoing issue caused by road and salt eating away at the concrete around the catch basin. Our Bryant paving will be coming out to give us a quote to repair that. The elementary schools' air compressor, one air compressor of the compressor heads was making a loud noise. A M, A and M compressor came out and shut one of the two compressor units down, they've ordered the Nestor Acoustics repairs. So the update on that is they've completed the repairs to the air compressor on May first, and it's been running without any issues. Millville continued to run the water to stimulate building, to simulate building usage for the normal school day. The week of June third through, through the sixth was at, he was asked to run ten additional sinks in preparation for water samples to be done Friday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Grade, he's got down here for grade reconfiguration, he spoke with the movers, and everything is still on schedule to start the classroom building moves on June eighteenth. Starting with materials being moved from the F W H, which is the middle school, right, to B M R, followed by the elementary schools into the middle school. This phase of the move should be completed by June twenty-fifth, and that's all he has in his report.
Thank you. A question on the move, are teachers, like, they're helping with that? They've already started packing or will be packing their rooms and
Yes, so boxes were delivered in May.
Okay.
So we got a super early jump on it. Yeah, and we have a schedule in place, it's going to be triggered by the eighth grade teachers here. So they're the first ones that get moved, because then everything's like a domino from there. Then the internal moves happen here, and then the elementary moves up here. And then Christina moves grade two over with grade three in A F M. So it's all like a domino that starts with the eighth grade.
Are we, just like we did last year when we had the emergency move, what time are we allowing teachers? I know you said boxes have been here since May, but it's still clearly taking time of their day. But to come in and set up their classrooms, are we doing any compensation for a day?
So, yeah, we, when we did the M O A with the teachers, we spent the time focused on school start and end time, you know, the stipends that we needed to modify as a result of, like, you know, the eighth grade not having a team leader, but having an advisor, like, some of that language, we didn't talk about. The classroom setup, we didn't get into that with them. It doesn't mean that we, you know, that we may not, but we just didn't. And the rooms, our rooms are packed, if you've seen any of the classrooms
But they have to get unpacked?
Yeah.
And, and they have to be ready for the first day of school?
Yeah.
So, I mean, last year, would we give them a day? Did we do a day?
They had, I believe that it was two hundred dollars was the amount we gave them.
Shocking it hasn't been asked for, I don't know, I
We gave them, the principals did a really nice job, like, so for instance, Jenny went with the fourth graders to the Blackstone Historical Museum, and the fourth grade teachers stayed back and packed. So we did things like that, they gave up P L C time, or like some of their climate planning time, or, you know, Jenny would cover recess. So they could be, so we've done a bunch of those, yeah, sorts of things. Actually, I was visiting our elementary schools this morning, and almost, not every, but almost every room is, is fully packed.
But the boxes, I know, like, when they move, like, eighth grade, no, so everyone has their own boxes, they're not waiting on them, someone to empty to get boxes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they all have, those were delivered in May.
Will teachers have access to their rooms as soon as, like, their stuff is moved, or do they need to wait until?
So we asked, in the timeline, we sent out, I think it was the end of April or mid-April, we sent out a timeline to the teachers after we contracted with the moving company and got that all squared away first. I believe it was the second August, second Friday in August, we asked them to wait till then because the rooms also have to, their stuff goes in, and we have to strip it. Like, we have to strip the floors, we have to clean the rooms, we got to put the boxes back, so it just takes the custodian's time to turn the actual rooms over. I think it was the second Friday in, in August, and then, then they can come in as much as they want. We also did say if they wanted earlier access, just reach out to the principal or the admin assistant, and if the room's done, they can come in, so.
For not being used, we have a lot going on at the complex, for example.
So people, the staff seem pretty, like, pretty good with that. But we're certainly happy to accommodate if their room's flipped and ready, then they can come in and set up. Unless you're hearing something I'm not hearing, because sometimes that happens, too.
Not yet. Anyone else, anything else on facility update? We've got use of facility, use of facility requests?
There's two, there's one from the Blackstone Youth Basketball Skills, they want to run a skills clinic, July fifteenth, seventeenth, twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, and thirty-first. And then just today, we heard from the Express Football and Cheer. Looking for, on July twenty-second, for use of a space at the high school from five to seven-thirty. And we would just charge them, because most of the kids are ours, they're from B M R, so we would just charge them for the custodian, but not for the space. So we had, we do have two, I added the second one at your seat, we just got it this morning. Why don't we want to make them wait because of, they would need to plan if we
Yeah, I know, that's, yeah, that's great, we can fit it in. Anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
Make the motion to approve, both of them.
Motion by Tara, is there a second? Second, Carrie, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
School committee forum, anyone have anything?
I have something.
All right.
So I was just thinking, this is so much paper, is there any way we could get with the times and move to PDF? Maybe everyone laptop of their own or something, it's just a lot of paper. It just, it's just a thought, I was just thinking, and you know, when you open up a PDF, sometimes there's a search and you can, you know, instead of I mean, it's a lot of paper.
Whatever you
Let's sell Dan on that.
Just, just a thought, I just put the thought out there.
Whatever you prefer.
So long ago, we went from all of this to paying a company, and I don't, I don't know who else would remember it, but, and everything was online. And then we started doing it ourselves. And then, I mean, another issue is the request of items on the table. So bringing your own computer opens you up to having it requested as
So it would have to be a, a school Chromebook.
I mean, this is, this is once a year.
Yeah.
But, and I think it also, I mean, it was also long ago, where, where we went, we were doing it ourselves, and Bridget at the time had to scan the entire packet in. And sometimes things weren't the right direction, and it was fine, but some people complained about it. And, I mean, I think it just got easier to go back to the folders. But there is history of it, I mean
Yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious to see other school committees what they do.
And take our money to do it for us, but probably same cost as the paper.
Just a thought.
I have two quick questions. When will Telstone be releasing the bus route times? With the change of school times, I know there are parents who are trying to figure out before and after school care based on what time their child will be getting on or off the bus. And I know, like, we don't set those times, do we have any idea when Telstone will be? It's usually right before school starts.
They're working on it, because it all, isn't on the routes, but I can follow up with them to see if we can have any timing updates for you at the next school committee meeting.
And then my other thing was, I don't know if we want to put on an upcoming agenda to maybe go over athletic user fees and our rental fees. If we want to maybe look to see what other districts are at, and if we're even comparable to some of the others.
I could speak with Scott about that this week, actually. Then we'll do a little bit of research on what we're renting, what in comparison to what's around.
Perfect.
Do you want that on the July eighth meeting?
We can, but if that's already a heavy agenda, I just, looking at all of this stuff, I
It's actually not yet.
Not yet.
We have room.
If there's room, great, but we'll just kind of keep it in the wings to talk about it soon.
Everybody would like to do that.
To piggyback on the bus thing, have we had word from Boys and Girls Club as far as the extended times on their end? I know that was concern among a lot of parents.
Yes, Jenny should have updated her, so after the, like, the open house here and parents asking the question, I then, that Friday, met with Bruce and Sarah. And had that discussion and brought the information back to Jenny, and she had put it in one of her newsletters, like, her Friday newsletters to families. So, yeah, so they are very much running there, before program, their after program. And Jill worked with Telstone to have the Boys and Girls Club as a stop, as, as we have it now. Yep, so parents won't, shouldn't feel an impact on their, like, their routine, all of those services are still in place. Does that get to what you were, I remember there was some questions
Exactly, that was one, just a finalization of that.
Definitely, yeah, I don't have the times off the top of my head, but, yeah, those services are still running. Actually, they were excited about trying to recruit more middle school kids now that they'll be with the fourth, the fifth graders, so there is an opportunity there, yeah.
Anyone else? Have you heard from the state, are they doing free lunch again next year? Like, that's a
As it stands now
I think it stands until they decide not to, right?
Yes, that's how I understood it.
Expect it to be, because just in the handbook, it had some of the, if your account's overdrawn, all that language is still in there, so it made me wonder if we had an expectation on it ending, so good, as far as we know, it's still free.
Yes, we'll change.
I think, I don't know that it matters in the handbook, because if it ever comes back.
Gotcha.
Better to have it there, I guess. All right, are we doing executive session?
I just have a very quick one, we can actually, once we shut off, we need to stay right here, it'll take about thirty seconds.
All right, so I make a motion, let's see if I get this right, to adjourn, to go to executive session, to adjourn from there, not returning to open session. Does that make sense? And we'll take roll call to enter executive session, Ted?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Tara?
Yes.
Tara, yes, Jason, Jill? All right. We're adjourned.